I'd like to open the meeting at 7:00. Before I get to the agenda, I'm going to be lighting this true rose candle. And we'll talk about that in a second. If I don't burn myself, right? My wife's probably watching. Yeah. Just to let everybody know, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And again, this evening, everybody's wearing pink. And I'd just like to just make a quick comment. Because October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we are once again lighting this rose candle to honor all those affected by breast cancer, both in person and in memory. At the last meeting, I shared the story of losing my own mother to breast cancer. And I'd just like to ask anybody here up at the membership, if they want to share a story with anybody, feel free to do so.
Thank you. Thank you. But I appreciate you raising this to all of ours and the community's awareness this month. The meetings that we've had, we've had the pink on. And you've had the candle and taken a few moments of each meeting. And I think it's worthwhile. I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. All right, why don't we start the meeting? It's now 7:05, transmitting of the Treasury warrants, number 16, 16A, 17, and 17A. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Selectman O'Connell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selectman Shampoo. Are those in favor? Unanimous. We don't have any minutes this evening. Let's see here. Yeah, let me get the glasses out now. Thank you. A 7:00 appointment, Dana Berman, President Wilmington Farmers Market, update on the 2013 season. Good evening. Why don't you take a seat right here?
Well, thank you for this opportunity to report in on how our season went and also a little bit about our plans for next year. I want to say, this year, we really felt like we were able to focus on Wilmington. I think people are more aware of the market and see it as a resource, a recurring event in the community. And so I think people were really able to make use of it. We had nine weekly vendors. We had about a dozen occasional or every other week vendors. And four of those vendors were from Wilmington. Two were new businesses, Let's Get Baked Bread Company and 27 West Coffee. Those were businesses started in Wilmington, by Wilmington residents specifically to come to the farmers market to sell their products. So we're really, really happy that there were people in town who, you know, knew of the farmers market and said, oh, because it's there, I'm going to start a business. So we felt like that was a great success. And we'd like to, you know, of course, see more of that happen. This year, last year, we had about 10 different organizations at our community table. This year, we can thank Robert Hayes for helping us joining our volunteer group. We had over 30 community groups. There's a list here on the presentation. It's the Farmers Market Eye Test. The font is very small. But we had over 30 Wilmington organizations come use the community table, which was fantastic. We're really happy that people know about it, know, you know, that it's a free table. You can come and get the word out. We had iPods for wounded veterans come a few times, have kids write letters. They were selling their fundraising items. A lot of different groups. It was really great. Another win for us this year was we had about a dozen kids from the high school through the Wildcat Community Service Project. We worked with Diane Garrity. And it was very varied what the kids did. They would help, some of them helped us set up and break down. We also have a market table that they helped us man. We also had a photographer from the high school who took pictures every week. We had a couple of kids show up and provide music for their community service. It was really fantastic. We also, this year, had a kids' table where we tried to have activities or crafts. So some of the high school kids helped out, got, you know, several hours of community service through working at the kids' table. We also had, really want to call out the town departments who are really helpful to us this year. We made a, we've tried to promote the towns composting program. So I met with Jamie McGoldy, who was really helpful about letting us know what the process was. So when we had the compost bins at the farmers market, we were able to tell people, you know, first you go to the town hall, they knew what the cost was, all of that. So that was, that was great. We had members of the police department on site on our last day to do car seat safety checks. Officer Moon was really great in helping set that up. That was actually a request from a customer. It was something that we had had on our minds for a while, because the car seat safety checks are on Wednesdays. And since the market is on a weekend, we thought we'd be able to get people. And I think they had 10 or 12 families stop by, which is fantastic. We were really, really happy about being able to do that. Also had great help from George Hooper in getting access to electricity. We don't normally need electricity. It's a very occasional thing. Vendor might need something. We actually had a couple of musicians who wanted to be able to set up their speakers. So George Hooper was great in helping us with that. And as always, I have to say thank you to Shelley Newhouse, who is wonderful in getting people their kitchens licensed, or any vendor we have who we send to her. She's great at getting them through the process. And then, as far as 2014, we're already in planning mode. We're meeting monthly. Our goals, major goal for next year is to be able to use the Swain location again, Sundays again, same hours. We think it's really important to, now people know about the market. We don't really want to change when we, when we run it, if that's possible. We'd like to, this year, next year, I'm sorry, start in mid-June again, as we have the past two seasons. And this year, we'd like to go into mid-October rather than the end of September. We are getting people asking us to run a winter market. We're not ready to do that for a couple of reasons. We don't have farms who are interested in doing that. And personally, it's extending the time commitment. And I, when I talked to my volunteers, I said, you know, who has during the fall, winter, and spring, who, who among us has a four or five-hour chunk that they can devote to running a market when, you know, you've got all your other things going on during the year? So we're not at a winter market yet, but we do have farmers who say their growing season goes a couple more weeks into the fall. So they'd like to be able to do, to have a couple more weeks for our market. Another thing we'd like to accomplish in the off-season is getting up and running for SNAP and EBT. We actually applied for a grant. And we have an EBT machine. We have a tent. We have posters and all that. But we have to go through the process of getting an FNS number through the U.S. Food and Drug Administration. I think that's what it is. So that's a goal for us over this off-season, to make that happen. And then, just in general, moving forward, we'd like to continue to focus on Wilmington. We had one dance company this year. There are tons of dance schools in town. We'd really love to get each one of them lined up to do a performance at the market. We're thinking about reaching out to the Chamber of Commerce and maybe having a Chamber of Commerce table at the market, if we could work that out with them. Another idea we had was maybe a Young Entrepreneurs Day. And we would reach out to DECA at the high school, maybe, or the tech. So a lot of ideas we're working on over the off-season to get more of a Wilmington community focus. When we first thought of running the farmers market, we wanted to call it the Wilmington Community Farmers Market, but the name's just so long that we just, we shortened it to Wilmington Farmers Market. But it does feel like it is, this year, it has become the Wilmington Community Farmers Market. So that's all I have for you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them now or get back to you.
Dana, before I go to the membership, I just need five seconds. I apologize. Selectman Samagley cannot be with us. As you know, he's our veterans agent, who does a fantastic job. There's a state veterans meeting tonight, and he had a prior commitment. So that's where Lou is there this evening. Sorry. I apologize.
No problem.
And I'd like to go to the membership. Anybody would like to say anything? I'll start with this side of the table.
Yeah, I'll go briefly. Dana, thank you very much for being here tonight. And to the rest of the committee through you for the hard work and effort. I know it's a lot of time commitment and for little personal reward, other than just the satisfaction of having the market be successful. So thank you to all of the people that you represent here tonight. Couple of things that I just noted through the year, or through the summer, was that, from my observation, and we had an occasion to visit the market on a number of occasions, me and my family, I sensed a sort of a momentum, almost like a flow. It feels like people kind of get it now. In the first year or so, you know, the people would, when the tents were setting up, you weren't exactly sure who was supposed to go where. And it was kind of, you were figuring it out. You could kind of see that.
Oh, yes, yes.
It looks like you figured it out now, and that was noticeable.
The basics, we've got down pretty well.
You have an established presence now in the, in the community, for the vendors, but also for the community. I think people in the, in the community, the town, recognize, oh, there's the farmers market. It's not a, like, what the heck is that thing anymore? It seems like there's been a continuous sort of evolution. Things have, as you've discovered, better ways to do things. You've implemented those as you've gone on, and it's evident. And what I really like about it, and what you closed with, is that inasmuch as it is a farmers market, and there's the produce and those, that's the primary reason for having a market, it's the ancillary benefits of involving the community organizations and the police and having these various checkpoints. I think that's really the value added. You know, we can find produce and some of the fresh things in a lot of different areas, but bringing that community connection and keeping it local really is what I think drives this thing home. So I'm delighted that you were able to have a successful year and looking forward to many more. So thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tough act to follow after that. Everything's been said up.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to personally thank you very much for being here tonight and also for your commitment to the farmers market. I know you and your team have spent many years and many hours working this through. And to Mike's point, it has evolved and it continues to get better each year. So thank you for reaching out to the community as a whole and trying to involve as much of the community as possible and also reaching out to the youth. Obviously, it's promoting healthy eating, and a lot of other local businesses here certainly benefit from it. So thank you for reaching out. And certainly, I've been down there to support it, and I will in the future. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
I just echo what's already been said. Thanks for all the work you've put in and your group, and look forward to seeing you again. I think you come in in the spring usually for those approvals or late winter, or whatever the case might be.
Yeah, I think so.
So we'll see you again soon.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, it's all been said. Unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to go to the farmers market. I'm back to work on Sundays. But the year before, I was there. My wife and her aunt from Belmont frequent that place quite often. And my wife's aunt from Belmont, she's one of these ladies that goes to all these farmers markets. And she says Wilmington by fire is the best.
Oh, that's great.
And I'd just like to say something relative to the hours. And I know people talked about it. Did you ever think about, I know it's going to be a call from the Board of Selectmen, expanding the hours a little bit? Are we prohibited from doing that? I mean, I didn't know if that would benefit farmers market.
Well, it's a funny thing. I mean, we try to, we try to hit the people who are sort of getting out of church around 10, 10:30. So any earlier than that on a Sunday feels too early. And then, we do notice, so we're open three hours, that last 45 minutes is, there are people showing up at 1:29, but from about quarter of 1 to 1:30, it's much slower. And I think, no matter what the hours are, if we had two hours, that last half hour would be slow. If we had four hours, so it's hard to say. If we, if we stayed open longer, I'm not sure we would get, you know, would be that much worth it. I don't think our vendors would mind, or we would mind. Just three hours seemed like not too long, not too short.
And I thought I mentioned it. I mean, obviously, you know best, so.
No, not necessarily. I can tell, I'll take it back to, to my group, definitely.
I appreciate you coming to the board, giving us an update. And once again, it's an outstanding time, and we appreciate that. And Dana, we appreciate it. And there's no other questions. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Our next appointment at 7:10 is Michael Wagonis, Police Chief, Relative to Regional Traffic Initiatives and Traffic Study. Chief, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I might approach the board, I just want to give them some documentation, a couple real quick this evening. First off, I want to thank you, Floyd, for having the police department represented here tonight on our regional, our regional traffic initiatives, and our safety programs within the community. Couple changes from last year's, you know, last couple of years, we've common, we've been the recipients of high honors with the Massachusetts Law Enforcement Challenge. Unfortunately, due to budget cuts, that program was cut, and we were not allowed to participate, which I think is a sad testament to the, you know, budget realities that were in, because I really liked that program, and I thought my officers really did a phenomenal job, as well as, you know, these individuals here, which I'll go through by name. It's Brian Moon, Brian Herman, Matt Stavro, Brian Gillis, Dan Murray, and Lieutenant Joe Desmond, who are my primary traffic enforcement program people. They pretty much plan the day-to-day operations with our traffic enforcement and safety initiatives and carry them out. With that said, I have to add that it's a department-wide effort. Everybody participates. When we do one of our, you know, traffic safety initiatives or a zero tolerance program, you know, many people within the department go out and work on that. So, you know, like I said, sadly, Massachusetts had stopped their program because of budget interest, but we actually received a certificate of recognition from the National Law Enforcement Challenge. I recognize this for our participation. You know, it's, I joked earlier that, you know, it's kind of like T-Ball today. Everybody gets a trophy. But in reality, not everybody participates in that program. And I think just getting involved, bringing our initiatives forward, presenting it in a package, quantifying it, qualifying it, and submitting that nationally, I think, for our first year, is, you know, a great benefit to the town. And, you know, I applaud these gentlemen for all their efforts in that, in that area. So I believe that the letter from the National was included in your package. And I just want to recognize these guys for everything they do on that. The next issue is, what I handed you out, is something that we're very proud of, and I think you'll see as we move through. We began a program a couple of years ago where we worked in a regional effort on traffic safety issues, similar to the way we do our drug enforcement initiatives and our force multiplication issues with NMLAC and, you know, programs like that and organizations like that, where we assist on a mutual aid basis. Couple of years back, we came up with an idea that maybe we should do this. So we're not just focusing with Wilmington officers on a Wilmington problem, but more a regional issue. Bless you. Because obviously, traffic that comes through Wilmington has come from Lubbock, has come from Reading, has come from Tewksbury, Burlington, et cetera. So this traffic operations folder that I've given you basically articulates some of the different training sessions that we have, I should say, deployment sessions that we've had. And you can see the numbers are pretty impressive. So I believe we have eight or nine deployments ranging from May of 2012 all the way up to August of this year. 108 arrests, 978 citations, total traffic stops, 1,133, 11 summonses, and 56 arrests for OUY, which I think is pretty impressive. I mean, that, that number there, and that's, this isn't like our entire year stats, this is just in these saturation patrols. And we've found that not only does the motivation of the officers go up because they're working in a regional effort with other towns and other agencies, we're targeting those time frames when the community is most blighted with people driving under the influence of alcohol and making bad decisions in their, in their operation of motor vehicles. So with that, you know, I think that's a great testament just to this. We've stepped up our traffic enforcement in general in the, in the community. So if you look on page two, we had the recent pedestrian decoy crosswalk operation, which was funded by the EOPS. And, you know, we made 100 motor vehicle stops, wrote a total of 100 citations. Violations were 46. Warnings for citations were 53. And one arrest. Brought in a total of $9,200 for citations for our crosswalk violations. And I say that only because, you know, it shows that the money that the state gives for that grant is offset by money we received from the citations. The other important thing is, is the safety increase in value of the pedestrians. And these are primarily done around the schools, down at the registry of motor vehicles. Anybody that's driven down there during the day knows that at certain hours, it can get pretty, pretty busy. And when people go across the street to get bank, to the bank to get their money, to go back and re-register their vehicles, or pay a fine, or do whatever they do, they use that one crosswalk there between the school and the bank. And we've seen a lot of near misses up there. So I think this was a great initiative. One thing that I found, that with our total traffic program, we did a quick study, in 2011, we had 827 motor vehicle accidents in town. 2012, that number was reduced to 707. And we expect that in 2013, we'll even get lower than that number, probably in the mid to high sixes. So, you know, it's relatively a 15% reduction in traffic crashes. That does a lot of things. First and foremost, it makes the residents safer. The less people are getting injured, our responses are reduced. But, you know, the financial aspect of that is, once the insurance companies see these reductions, it reflects in your insurance policies at the end of the year. So, you know, when you see the officers out there and the blue lights are turning, there's a method to the madness. I know sometimes that we get recognized on some of the social media, as far as Twitter and Instagram and Facebook. And we'll start an initiative, and next thing you know, everybody's calling and saying, you're on, you're already on Twitter. So it sends a message to the people in town that we're out there. And I think, you know, that doesn't frustrate us. That helps us. Because obviously, anytime you get advertisement for free, it's a good thing. If they know you're out there and you're active. So with that benefit, we actually took to opening our own Twitter account. And you can follow us, believe it or not, just recently on Twitter, at WilmingtonMAPD. And we also opened an Instagram account. And I think we did one of our first posts in the last day or so. And that Instagram account is WilmingtonMAPD. And the Instagram photo that you see there is actually, we're doing a texting initiative in the square. And you'd be shocked at how many people are texting. So we stand an officer just down in full uniform, because they can't see you, because they're texting while they're driving. And they come up through the square, and they'll call out the different cars. And we've made quite a few stops. And, you know, it's enlightening to the folks that are coming through town, because I know I drive an SUV, and I'm always looking out the window, and I can see people constantly texting. It's just something that, you know, you'd be on the highway, and somebody's got their phone out where they're driving with their knee, and they're doing it. It's very dangerous behavior. So, you know, we'll be out there in full force, enforcing the texting laws as well, reducing motor vehicle accidents by, you know, intense enforcement and targeted enforcement. And, you know, one of the big ones is focusing on OUYs, operating under the influence, really trying to take those folks, you know, and make it clear to them that that can't be tolerated in this community. And with that, you know, I just, once again, it's the programs that these folks put together. They come up with these ideas. I'll throw something out there. But they actually put it together and make it work. So I thought that it would be nice to have them recognized. Obviously, my deputy chief is in the back of the room, Bob Richter. He oversees everything else that they do in the process and does the checks and balances and makes sure that everything works fluidly. So obviously, he needs to be recognized as well.
Really, I was just the eye candy.
He's the eye candy, yeah. So, you know, I hope that Massachusetts brings back the law enforcement challenge. It was a lot of fun to participate in. It was a lot of fun to go to the award ceremony to not only be recognized at a high level, but also to see some of the programs that the other officers in their departments respectively had put together. And it made us better at what we do. And I think that that's one of the best things that we offer with this type of program, is that you get to look in and at what your programs are and what you're doing, and what works and doesn't work. And one of the things we noticed is, you know, we saw a spike in traffic accidents. And we said, we need to drop this down. And it's nationally recognized that the best way to drop motor vehicle accidents isn't to increase traffic enforcement. It just keeps people a little bit more vigilant, a little bit more aware, and they don't make the mistakes that they ordinarily will make. Distracted driving, it's a huge problem now. I mean, you see, like I said, with the texting, the phone calls, with the radios, with everything that's going on in the cars, it's very, very, very dangerous. So, you know, we're going to be out in full force in the next couple of months, really, really pushing that message and trying to let everybody know that, you know, this is ill-advised behavior in a motor vehicle. I also sent a letter that I had sent to the legislative contingent regarding a Senate bill, I believe it's 1115, yeah, Senate Bill 1115. And it's regarding a primary enforcement initiative for seatbelt, the seatbelt law. Right now, it's a secondary enforcement matter. And Massachusetts is kind of lingering in the back of the pack on this. A lot of states have a primary law. A lot of states have converted to a primary law.
Chief, can I ask you to define primary and secondary? A little more.
A primary enforcement of seatbelt laws is if I am patrolling in an area and I see you not wearing your seatbelt, I can stop you for that. Right now, we're on the secondary in Massachusetts. In other words, I will have to observe you make another infraction before I can go up and discuss the matter with the seatbelt. You know, I know a lot of my officers, because traffic safety and the health of the motoring public is a priority of ours, they do stop a lot of vehicles. And a lot of times, they'll give them a warning for the speed or whatever else they're doing, but they'll, they'll give them the citation for the, for the seatbelt violation. And really try to drive that home, that, you know, we've seen it time and time again on 93 or some of these, you know, other highways where there's a rollover. And, you know, if you're not wearing your seatbelt, it's really, really ugly. But we've seen people walk away from car crashes that you could just not imagine they were wearing their seatbelt, and they, they got dinged up, they get bumped and bruised, but they weren't severely injured. And they walk away. They actually stand there while the car's getting towed. Seatbelts do save lives. Anybody that'll tell you anything different, the study after study from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration on the use of seatbelts and their ability to save your life. This letter here is primarily, as Mass Chiefs, we've been pushing for a primary seatbelt law in Massachusetts. We've been frustrated. It's gone before the House committees on, you know, on a couple of occasions and kind of stalled. It does have, seem to have grown new legs out of the Worcester area. Unfortunately, it's passed, paired with a racial profiling bill, which was, I thought was kind of odd. This, this letter, and we've had National Highway Traffic, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration testify on our behalf at the, at the committee level regarding the lack of a racial profiling issue having to do with seatbelts. It's a myth. It's kind of grown legs, kind of like an urban legend. And the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration can show the hard and cold facts that there's no correlation between the two. So, you know, I thought it would be important to come out and let you know, first and foremost, that I support a primary seatbelt law, but that I don't support the other aspect that I've, and it's not because I'm against racial profiling. We actually do it in Wilmington. We do studies on it. Every stop is called in, and we give certain data that the state has suggested through the EOPS that we collect. And we do annually review that as part of our accreditation processes to make sure that there's nobody in an area that you could see a tick in increased traffic stops for certain genders or races and things like that. And like I said, every year we do that. We don't have an issue here in Wilmington. So I think that, in reality, it'll bog down the process. A lot of this, what this legislature is asking for is already done, but it's going to require us to report four times a year. You know, there's, there's a lot that's added into that law that isn't just about avoiding racial profiling, which I agree with, we shouldn't racial profile. But to add it on to the end of this, I should say, on the beginning of this, because very, probably two sentences have to do with the seatbelt law. Everything else has to do with racial profiling. So I do have a copy of the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration's review, having to do with, you know, the relationship between primary seatbelt laws and minority ticketing, which I have reviewed, and it appears solid, and I agree with, if anybody would like to see it. Entertain any questions?
Thank you, Chief. I'll just add the table, Mr. Norris.
Thank you for all the information and for the work that the entire department, and particularly the gentlemen that are here this evening, for all the work that you're doing. Couple of things that struck me as you made some of your comments, Chief. Oftentimes, as elected officials, we hear a push to implement different forms of regional type of government. And, you know, and I've found over the last five to 10 years especially, it's really used as a buzzword, this, you know, regionalization, you know? And my response oftentimes is that we do a lot of that stuff. We just don't, you know, we don't necessarily give it a label. But I think that's another great example of, you know, a joint effort with other cities and towns that constitutes a regional effort to take care of the town's business. And that's both in terms of the traffic enforcement, NMLAC you had mentioned, and, you know, it's just two examples. So, uh, I kinda make that as a, as a footnote, because, uh, it's, I find that whole theme to be kind of aggravating sometimes, it's, uh, it's really pushing something we already do. Uh, the other thing that you had mentioned was, uh, just seatbelts and, and the track record of, of safety associated with them. I actually took a CPR course, I think it might have been Mr. Herman from your department that was involved in that years ago. And, uh, I, I suspect I'm not alone, many, many people out there accept, as a matter of fact, that, um, seatbelts save lives. But, uh, growing up at a different time when, you know, it wasn't as, um, uh, it wasn't such a focal point, it wasn't talked about as much. And, you know, even my parents, uh, when they were growing up, they, cars just didn't have them. Um, so a lot of it is just, uh, you know, just a question of habit. And one of the points that, um, somebody made, and again, I, I think it was Mr. Herman, uh, remember that when you're in a car, especially when you have your kids or other people in the vehicle, if you don't have a seatbelt on and you get in an accident, you're a two-hundred-pound flying object. And, uh, that really made an impression on me and I, I relate that to a number of people. So, um, in this forum, I figure it's a great time to share that with folks who might be watching. Uh, if it's, if it's not a habit that you're into, uh, think about the other folks in the car, especially kids, if you're, you know, two-hundred pounds plus flying around the, the inside of the vehicle. So, um, other than those two things that just struck me as you were speaking, I appreciate you being here, appreciate all of you taking your time and, uh, extend, uh, you know, our congratulations to the rest of the department on the, on the good work that you're being recognized for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newell. Anybody else?
Just wanna say thank you very much to all of you for being here and congratulations on the hard work. I know, um, every year, you know, there's constant recognition and just continuous support of the community. We're in a, in a great spot to be able to personally acknowledge you, but there are many residents that, in the town that sleep easy because they know that you're out there taking care of, uh, things on behalf of everyone twenty-four-seven. So I just wanna say thank you and a job well done.
Yeah, echo that, uh, as well. Congratulations to the whole department. It's always very impressive to see all of you together in uniform, uh, in front of us, and, uh, gives me a lot of peace of mind knowing you guys are out there. So thank you very much for what you do, uh, you know, on the National Law Enforcement, Law Enforcement Challenge, but also what you do every single day out there. So, uh, congratulations to all of you. Chief, um, I gotta say, I have a, it's funny to me to think about you sitting there with your cellphone tweeting out from the department. So to, to think that the department has a, a Twitter handle now is pretty cool.
Yes.
That being said, as a segue, uh, on this report, you gave us the unfortunate statistic of fifty-six OUI, I guess arrests, that were made throughout these eight, just these, whatever it is, eight or nine individual campaigns. It's a positive in that that's fifty-six fewer folks that are driving around on these particular days. But it's a negative, I guess, in, in the context for me, um, that there's still people that think that they can go out and do this. Uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's an unfortunate reality that, uh, there are folks out there. What's not on here, and do you foresee a time when you will measure and report on, uh, arrests or citations that you make for distracted driving? I guess you've called it texting or, 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 you know, tweeting or whatever it is?
Yes, yes, we'll be coming back and, and, and probably next year.
Yeah.
We'll have those statistics. It's, it's a fairly new law, and so, um, the state police had run a pilot program on it, actually in and through Wilmington, you'll see them stopping some cars around, around town. Um, we're starting that initiative now. It, it's been hard for us, 'cause these numbers that you see here are also reflected during a time where we were down five to seven personnel. So I would expect that if we had those five or seven personnel onboard, we probably would have done better with these numbers. And, and, and I don't mean better in a bad way. I know this is an enforcement action against the citizens or other people that travel in and through Wilmington, but if the behavior's there, it needs to be addressed. If you ignore it, it'll continue and flourish. So, you know, I, unfortunately, these folks, uh, you know, ended up, uh, a little lighter in the pocket because of a fine, or maybe spent some time, uh, in the jail and went to a court proceeding because of their actions. But I, I think it, it gives them pause at this point when they see we're out there and we're on Twitter now and they send that feed out, that, you know, they're there. You know, that, that night, it gets hotter and hotter for us to be able to find the distracted driver or the person that runs the red light or, you know, or passes somebody inappropriately in a mock lane situation, um, because the word is out. And then, isn't that what we're looking for?
Indeed.
You know, to the point where someday we would hope that we wouldn't have to deploy like that and these numbers wouldn't be as high as they are, is, is, I guess, the ultimate goal. Um, but we can't just do that in Wilmington, and that's the regional aspect of it, is to understand that these folks are coming from other areas and they all need to know that when they see the blue lights going, you know, they could find the same, um, reception in North Reading or, or Woburn or Reading or Burlington. And we've worked with all those communities, so that's the exciting part about it.
We live in a Wilmington bubble, right?
Yeah, we do, yes. It's, it's regional for sure.
Thank you again. Congratulations, guys.
And I, I'd just like to say a few things. Obviously, I wanna congratulate the chief and the deputy chief, uh, on your achievement. I wanna take my selectman's hat on, off, and I wanna put my hat on as a taxpayer, a husband and a dad. I wanna especially thank you guys on the front line, the work that you guys do day in and day out. You really protect our community, we feel safe. And I gotta tell you, you guys do an outstanding job, we have a great, uh, department. And I think it's not sad enough, but it means a lot. And I wanna thank you guys. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mike, I appreciate it.
All right, guys, you're welcome to stay, we're gonna be on about fifteen minutes, okay? But I want you out in the park and wait till us to get up there, okay? Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Goodnight, guys, thank you.
Goodnight.
Chief, deputy?
Our seven twenty-five appointment, discussion and assignment of motion for Article One of the special town meeting. And I'll turn that over to the, uh, town manager.
Uh, well, as you know, uh, for the special town meeting that will be taking place on, uh, November thirteenth, starting at, uh, seven PM at the middle school, uh, there are three articles on the warrant. The first one is the article to see if the town will purchase, uh, property from, uh, Saint Dorothy's Church or the Archdiocese. Uh, that is the article that, uh, a member of the board, uh, will need to move, uh, file the motion on. The second article is the rezoning article, uh, the, that will be taken care of, uh, by a member of the planning board. And then the final article is a petition article, which will be addressed by the petitioner. So, uh, at this point, it's just a matter of determining, uh, who chooses to, uh, address the motion for Article One.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. Why don't we continue onto communications?
Uh, well, is, is there, uh, I guess, I think it would be advisable to just, uh, have a, an indication tonight as to who will, uh, take on that motion for the, uh, special town meeting?
Anyone in particular wanna take on that motion, uh?
I think it'd be applicable to have you as the chairman, but I, I don't have any strong feelings on, on any.
I don't have a problem presenting that, uh, article to the town meeting. I agree. Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, under correspondence, uh, a letter of appointment, uh, that has been sent to Joseph Kilos. This is, uh, regarding the Yentel Farm, um, Committee. If you recall, Yentel Farm Development Committee. Uh, letter reads as follows, "I am pleased to advise you that you have been appointed to serve as a member of the Yentel Farm Development Committee. As you know, the town purchased the Yentel Farm property on Cross Street for the purpose of developing an outdoor recreational complex. Uh, the acquisition of this property provides the town with the unique opportunity to expand its inventory of athletic fields and recreational sites through, through the development of a multipurpose outdoor play area to serve Wilmington fam, uh, families. Please contact the town clerk's office, uh, at the town hall, uh, in order to meet the requirements that, uh, you be sworn in before you assume the responsibilities of this position. Please bring this letter when you appear before the town clerk for qualification. The next scheduled meeting of the Yentel Farm Development Committee is Thursday, November seventh, uh, at six PM, uh, in Room Nine, Wilmington Town Hall. You may wish to contact Judith O'Connell, uh, chairperson, uh, for additional information on the future meeting dates and times. Thank you for your willingness to participate in, uh, on this important committee. As you may know, uh, the, uh, committee was comprised by a number of individuals. Some, uh, each member of the board of selectmen, uh, brought forth a name for appointment. And the, uh, appointment that was made by then-town manager Mike Kyra, uh, was Mark Nassif. Uh, unfortunately, given, um, professional commitments, job commitments, he was, uh, he, he needed to step down, uh, so, uh, Mr. Kilos would replace, uh, Mr. Nassif. Uh, he has been attending the meetings on a regular basis, uh, since late spring. He also happens to work at Textron, so, uh, there's certainly, um, I, I think that there's some advantage there in terms of having that connection and, uh, in terms of any future, uh, collaboration that may happen. I have a memo to the board. This is with respect to the Arts, Wilmington Arts Council. Jean Chang, who's the chairperson of the Wilmington Arts Council, uh, has expressed concern about maintaining a membership, uh, which currently stands at five. Uh, and she indicated to me that, uh, as it stands right now, there are two individuals, uh, on that membership of five, uh, that are due to, uh, step down in April. Uh, the way the, uh, the requirements of the Arts Council work is that, uh, after someone has served for six consecutive years, they have to step down for at least one year and serve in an advisory capacity. So we have two individuals that will be in that situation in April of two thousand fourteen. Uh, she indicated to me that, uh, there is an individual in North Reading, uh, who has, for a number of years now, provided instructions, instruction for some of the art council-sponsored programs. Uh, and she was suggesting that perhaps, uh, she be considered for appointment. Uh, I suggested that prior to, uh, taking that step, uh, that, uh, we attempt to, um, recruit, uh, additional members to serve on this, uh, committee. Uh, there is no requirement that we can find in terms of, uh, the state regulations, uh, that prohibit someone who is a non-Wilmington resident from, from serving on this committee. Uh, but certainly, it would be, I think, appropriate to try to, uh, first identify people, uh, who are Wilmington residents, uh, to serve. So, uh, my thought is to, uh, just put this out, out there, uh, to the public. If you are interested in the arts, uh, and, um, think that this, uh, opportunity to volunteer on the Wilmington Arts Council might be something, uh, for you, uh, certainly, please, uh, contact my office. Also, if members of the board have individuals that either come to you or you think, uh, might be interested, uh, I, I encourage you to reach out to them. Uh, the Arts Council's primary, uh, responsibility is to distribute, uh, funds that they receive from the Massachusetts Arts Council. Uh, and there, uh, each year are, are individuals who submit grants, uh, to, uh, support their, uh, effort at whatever, um, whether it's, um, paintings or any number of artistic endeavors, uh, these, these funds go towards supporting that. Uh, this year, the Arts Council, uh, received four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and so they review all these applications and ultimately distribute, uh, the funds. Uh, in addition, they, uh, have an arts show typically in June, and, and on occasion, they'll also have, uh, another featured event in December. So, um, again, if there's interest, um, I think it would, quite honestly, be advantageous to the council to have, uh, anywhere from nine to eleven members. Uh, the statute allows for up to twenty-two, but, um, I think we need to try to grow this, uh, committee if possible.
Jeff, may I ask, do you have a general idea or gist of about how much of a time commitment that represents for the members or a prospective member?
Uh, I don't offhand. I can certainly talk to Jean and, and obtain that information. I, I believe this time of the year, uh, is a busier time because, um, they're going through these grant applications. Uh, so my, my understanding is, uh, September through October, um, they may have, uh, multiple meetings over the course of the couple of months, and then it, it may taper off a bit and then they get geared up again for their June, um, event.
I anticipate that any potentially interested parties in the community hearing this meeting, that would be one of probably their primary questions is, you know, geez, I'm, I'm real interested in doing this, but I don't know if I have the time to give to it. So, uh, it might be something as people reach out, uh, and, or reach into your office, uh, that's gonna be important information for them to have, I imagine.
Also, we have correspondence, uh, from Minuteman Senior Services. This is directed to, uh, Terry Marciello, the elderly services director. "In fiscal thirteen, Minuteman Senior Services provided services to over twelve hundred residents of Wilmington at a total value of eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight thirty-one. A detailed breakdown of the services used is attached. As a nonprofit aging services access point in Area Agency on Aging, our mission is to help seniors and individuals with disabilities live in the setting of their choice by engaging community resources and supporting caregivers. The majority of funds come from government grants and contracts which have not kept pace with the growing needs of the senior population in our sixteen community region. As you know, we coordinate our work with councils on aging and other local social service and healthcare providers and community safety personnel. A resident of your community is a voting member of our Board of Directors to ensure that your community's interests are, are represented in our program planning and decision-making. Uh, we are grateful for the continued support received from your community. Your local assessment for the next two years, fiscal fourteen and fifteen, is five thousand one hundred and eleven dollars per year. It is based upon the most recent federal census and adjusted annually by the Consumer Price Index. Uh, these funds are critical as they enable us to leverage federal funds and help pay for our extensive senior nutrition program. If you have any questions regarding the Minuteman Services, please call me. As always, we look forward to working with you." Just to highlight some of the services they provide, information and referral, uh, case management and in-house home care, caregiver support, protective services, transportation, meals on wheels, uh, nursing home screening and long-term care, um, on Budsmann, uh, money management assistance. So there's a number of different programs that, uh, the senior, Minuteman Senior Services Uh, then the final, uh, final correspondence here is, uh, a letter from Louis Semeglia, Department of Veterans Services, uh, an invitation to the board, uh, for the, um, the, um, Veterans Day ceremonies. "The Wilmington Department of Veterans Services invites you and the Board of Selectmen to participate in remembering and honoring our past and present veterans on Monday, November eleventh, two thousand thirteen. We will assemble at the Fourth of July parking lot at ten forty-five AM and proceed to the town common for this year's Veterans Day ceremonies to begin at eleven AM. I would also like to respectfully request the use of the town common, uh, for the ceremonies. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me." So the request for the use of the common.
Is there a motion?
I move to grant the request for the use of the common for Veterans Day, uh, celebration and ceremonies, uh, on November eleventh, uh, this year.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made by Selectman Shampou, second by Selectman Newhouse. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
And, uh, that's it under correspondence.
Okay, public comments, any public comments at all? No public comments? Jeff, you wanna, all right, uh, new business in committee reports. I'll start on this side of the table, Mr. Shampou.
Start down here. Uh, one thing I, I meant to bring up, uh, when the chief was, uh, speaking to us just a little while ago, and I know he's still here, so if he wants to chime in, I, I invite him to. But, um, hopefully by this point, or somewhere close to this point next year, uh, the construction will have been completed and the intersection at Glen Road, uh, Middle Sex Ave and Woburn Street will be complete. Am I right about the timelines? I think that's what I remember we were, was presented to us, right?
Yes, the plan is to, uh, begin the construction in the spring of two thousand fourteen.
This coming spring, okay.
And be complete by, uh, the end of the construction season.
Okay, so, yeah, it'd be around now. I, I suspect that they should be coming to completion. And I don't have the data at my fingertips, but I, I would imagine that in terms of the context of overall street safety, that that intersection is probably one of the more prolific sites for accidents. Um, and with the new light scenario that will be installed over there, that we should hopefully achieve some, uh, improved safety in that region. So I'm glad to be able to report that, and I know that, uh, I shouldn't say I know, but I, I'm confident that the police officers will, uh, will enjoy having a safer connection over there. The only other thing I guess I wanted to talk about was the special town meeting. I wanna, I think it bears repeating, it's November thirteenth. I'm very, very, personally, I'm very proud, as a member of this board, uh, to be a part of the Board of Selectmen that, um, worked with you, Jeff, and, uh, the Archdiocese to create the opportunity for some future generation of Wilmington residents to take advantage of this, uh, really very attractive piece of property. Um, and I don't want the residents- And I don't want the residents today to take it for granted. I really want to encourage residents to see the opportunity here for the future, whatever that means, whether that's five years, 10 years, or some other generation of residents of this town, to leverage the attractive placement that that property has within our community. We don't know yet what it'll be used for. Some other Board of Selectmen, some other town meeting members will decide how that property gets used. But it requires that residents today come out on November 13th and cast their vote and vote in favor of acquiring this piece of property so that the next generation can take advantage of it. It's something that I will hang my hat on very proudly as I, someday no longer am part of this board. I just hope that people, the residents, will come out that evening. It will not be a long meeting if it all goes well. So please mark your calendar, November 13th, 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shampou.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Judy.
The only thing I would have is, I appreciate the comments that Mr. Shampou made. And I might add to that by reminding folks that the quorum for a town meeting, a special town meeting, is 150 residents. If you can come in, check in, that counts towards the quorum, even if other commitments force you to leave a little bit earlier than you might like, that's okay. It's still helpful to get the quorum going and I think that's probably worth mentioning as well.
That's a good point. Thank you. I'm all set on new business committee reports.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add one comment to what both Selectman Shampou and Selectman Newhouse made, and that is that it is clear that we don't have a particular use for this property at this time. And that isn't because we don't have various needs. There's, there are clearly needs that this community has in terms of additional public space. And just by example, not that these are necessarily on the front burner for this property, but whether it be a town, school admin building, a senior center, you know, some kind of a recreational facility, there are a number of different needs that we have. But as so often is the case, opportunities like this come up oftentimes when you don't necessarily have a particular plan in place. So it's not, it shouldn't be dismissed that we're just purchasing property to purchase property. There will be, this property will be used at a point in time and, but this is the window of opportunity that we're working within. So it's clearly to the town's advantage to come out and I would strongly encourage residents to vote in favor of this.
Thank you, Jeff. I mean, I put my two cents in. I didn't plan on speaking on it, but other members did. I'm for the project. I think it's well worth it. And once again, as the town manager say, we don't have anything slated for it. And Judy could attest to this. There's three words to use on Main Street. Location, location, location. It's a valuable piece of property. It's in a great proximity and it's going to be an asset to the community. Thank you.
Chairman, I think it's excellent that the town manager brought up the fact that even though we don't have a specific targeted use, that there is a need. Because I think that definitely bears repeating. And I think also too, the fact that we would be using available cash that the town has presently and would not be incurring an additional tax burden to the residents, I think is also an important point to make. And finally, you know, just, just a friendly statement that please don't assume that the next person is going to attend the meeting to vote on your behalf to see that it goes through. So we certainly need as many residents coming out that day to participate so that we can get the job done. As everyone has clearly conveyed their support, I also too want to echo that support as well. So I think we all obviously have stated that we stand unanimous on, on this vote for a yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
Under important dates, November 30th, we have the curbside collection of yard waste, actually through November 30th, brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM on October 30th. We have November 2nd, brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Also on November 2nd, townwide flu clinic, town hall auditorium, 9:00 AM to noon. November 6th, brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. November 7th is the next Yentel Farm Development Committee meeting, town hall, Room 9, begins at 6:00 PM. November 9th, brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. November 11th is the Veterans Day ceremonies. Town offices will be closed. On November 12th, Board of Selectmen's meeting, town hall, Room 9, 7:00 PM. The November 13th, brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And once again, just to note that the special town meeting is happening on November 13th, Wilmington Middle School Auditorium, 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Before, there is one. I just want to state that it's 8:00 o'clock and that it's Game Five of the World Series starting right now. So when we next convene, we'll know how it all folded out. So I moved, I would move to adjourn.
Motion made, second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Have a nice night.